Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you for joining us here on a New Year's episode of The Mayor's Table. I have three incredible guests with me today for the first time on a mayor's table. We've invited the Farmington City Council to join us to kind of talk about the new year and 2024 and the things that are going on and things that have happened and kind of, I don't know, it's just great, I think, to have kind of the represented leadership group here today. So I will start with, to my left, we have the District Three City Councilor, Janine Bingham-Kelly.
Hello.
Thanks for being here. We have District One City Councilor Linda Rogers.
Hello.
And we have the District Four City Councilor Janice Jakino.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, so Janice and Janine and I were just recently re-elected for a four-year term that officially starts basically now. And Ms. Rogers, you were elected in 2021 after an extended term as well for four years. So thank you all. Thank you first for your services, community and your constituents. I've enjoyed serving on the city council now for, Linda and I have been there since 2016 together.
I was actually appointed in 2015.
Was it 15? I was trying to think.
I served a six-month term.
Yeah, that's right. Interesting.
A while.
That's interesting. Janice elected in 2018.
Yes.
And Janine was 2018.
Yes.
Okay. Well, you've had all these years of experience in serving on the city council. We'll just kind of throw it out there. What has been the most interesting part of being in that kind of elected leadership position? What has surprised you the most maybe about that role? And whoever wants to take it, Linda?
Mayor, I think the thing that has surprised me the most is the magnitude of the decisions that we make because what we do at city council really affects our entire community, whether that be ordinances or policies. I think it's the enormity of it and it's the idea that no matter which way we vote, it's probably going to upset some folks. And we really do, we really do hope to appeal to the greater good or to serve the greater good. And so I think that's what has been the most interesting and maybe challenging thing for me so far.
Yeah, I mean, there is a lot of issues that come across there. They do have very wide-reaching repercussions and I'm a big proponent of the fact that I think local government is the most impactful government on everybody's daily life. I mean, every day you step out of the house and you get in your car, you drive on a public road, you're dealing with city government right there. You know, every time you look at your electric bill or you look at your utility bill, you're dealing with city government during that time. So there are some very important components that go into the decisions we make. And I would just relay this too. We think about decisions that were like three-two votes and City Manager May is always likes to use the Farmington Lake, you know, our reservoir was passed by a three-two vote. And now here we are in 2024. How important is Lake Farmington to our community? And thank goodness, it was passed by a three-to-two vote.
That's right.
Very big decisions. What other things, Councilor Jakino, kind of stand out to you that's surprising?
I would agree with Councilor Rogers that our decisions are very impactful and the consequences of those decisions do affect people on a daily basis. And budget season's going to be coming up. We're going to be talking numbers and big numbers. And thank goodness, each one of us has a financial background that we can lean on and take that experience and education that we have so that we can make good decisions for the constituents.
Yeah.
You know, Mayor, I would just add one more thing that just popped into my head. And that is that I believe that everybody who serves on this council, you included, we really are very thoughtful about the decisions that we make. And I agonize with some because I do feel the enormity and the weight of those decisions. And I really feel like each of us are very thoughtful and wise in how we go about making decisions.
I would agree. Yeah, Councilor Bingham-Kelly.
For me, it was just how many departments that we have and just trying to get information on everything. And I just want to shout out to the staff. They are an excellent resource and I'm very proud to work with them, so.
No, I would say that too. And you know, you talked about budget, Councilor Jakino, and that's one of the main things that we do, right, is to approve the spending budget for the city when it comes to parks and roads and utilities and all those things. And we've had some much tougher years, by the way, since we've all served together as long as we have, where we've not had kind of what we've had the last few years, which has been, we've been able to get through a lot more projects. This past 2023, we were very aggressive in our paving. I remember sitting in a city council meeting in 2015 and the conversations were, look, we may not have enough money to pave roads in five years at the way things were looking at that time. And I remember David Seifer, just he was in disarray about it. How are we going to deal with this if we don't have people living in our community? And I think that's really been, in my opinion, one of the top things that we have done is we've kind of set a really positive vision for this community, recognizing the challenges that we've obviously faced economically. And we talk about it a lot. And when you lose high-paying, you know, high-paying jobs in the oil and gas industry, it's hard to replace those. And of course, those high-paying jobs end up building service sector jobs and people out, you know, were pretty upset about it and were concerned about the future of our community. I think you all have done a fantastic job in leading and kind of setting a tone that we can be much bigger than that. We need to think bigger, we need to believe bigger, and we can do great things. And I would say we've done a really good job, so.
I would have to ask you, Mayor Duckett, what has been something that you didn't know, didn't think would be as big as it is? What's been the biggest challenge for you?
Well, I think the most surprising thing to me was the transition between city council and a mayor. Like, I don't think I truly understood or recognized the role that the mayor plays on so many different levels. And in so many places where people would like the mayor to be involved with their project, with their fundraiser, with, you know, whatever the case may be, that's really been surprising to me. I didn't, I didn't know how much time Tommy Roberts had spent doing those things. And so that, to me, has been maybe just in the role as mayor has been most surprising. The other component of that is, you know, just the interactions between governmental entities, whether it's the cities and how we interact with one another and then with the county and of course with the state. And there's big challenges, I think, in our northern New Mexico and the tribe, of course, and the tribal governments. There's so many of those relationships that we're trying to maintain and we're trying to foster positive growth out of. That's been really interesting to me.
Well, I think you've done a fantastic job, Mayor Duckett, of leading this city and as a counselor and as mayor. I know you have a lot of passion and vision for some of the things that we've done and I appreciate your leadership in our community as a counselor as well.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, we all have a heart of service.
We do.
And when we look at individuals that we want to, for example, serve on advisory boards, I'm always trying to find those folks that just have that heart to serve as opposed to being a, you know, a one-issue person who wants their agenda to come to the forefront of everything that we do. We have a very diverse community and it's a big, it's a big city when you consider the 250,000 people that are coming in and out of here, you know, maybe on a monthly or monthly basis. We serve a lot of folks, so we have to always keep those things in mind as well with what we're doing. But yes, you know, looking at the next four years, what do you guys kind of see happening? Is there any, anything that stands out? And I don't want to put you on the spot and, you know, because there's a lot of things we could say, but we've come a long way on a particular kind of some initiatives. And how do you see those things maybe playing out the next four years? And I'll start with Councilor Bingham-Kelly.
Well, again, it's just, you know, focusing on that outdoor component, growing that. I think that's probably going to be the main focus for the near future. So and of course, we've got some projects in the works that I'm very excited about, like Gateway Museum and, you know, Lions Pool, seeing what we can do there. And of course, All Abilities Park. So I'm very excited about the next four years.
Absolutely.
I really love what we're doing with parks, but I also think that it's taking care of our infrastructure, whether that be repairing what we already have, maintaining that as well as growing new and exciting things. And also to provide for public safety, I think that's going to continue to be a main goal of this council and making sure that we're attracting police officers who can serve our community and all first responders.
Right.
So those are the things that are on my mind.
Very good. Councilor Jakino.
We have set quite a few things in motion in the tenure that we've had together, excuse me, parks and the fun things that we like to talk about. But it is also important to note that we are able to leverage and balance our assets with infrastructure in mind, making sure that people have clean water, power when they flip the light switch, safe streets, clean streets to drive on and that public safety component. So it's making sure that all of it is given the ample amount of attention in the next four years so that there is balance between the fun and the things that are necessary.
And all those speak to the quality of life, you know, growing our quality of life here. And I think we're fortunate to live in a community that's had, you know, strong leadership over the years. Right now at City Hall, you know, you can look across the state, there's a lot of municipalities who don't have the kind of tenure and leadership, important leadership positions that we have. And I think making sure that we are focused on succession planning and training and keeping people developed to the level that we need them to be so that we can continue to have that kind of success. I was a big fan of the book From Good to Great. And in that book, they talk about getting the flywheel going. And when you have changes of leadership at important leadership positions, that flywheel has a tendency to slow down and it's hard to keep that momentum going forward. And so I think us staying focused on that end is really going to play an important role over the next four years. Going back to a question about most surprising thing, I would say the need for the individuals of our community to be engaged, we need them to be engaged. We are only the representatives within local government, but to create the community that we want to live in, that we aspire to live in, it takes each and every one of us doing our part. And everybody has a role that they play. And that part to me, I think, is really important. And what surprises me is how fundamental that foundation is. We have a really good core group of community members who are serving in a number of roles. And just like succession planning at the city and making sure leadership is in the right place, it's making sure that community members know that these boards and the missions of these boards exist and that you can be a part of that and help facilitate, whether it's, you know, River Reach Foundation and the events that they're involved with, or whether it's Sexual Assault Services and their mission, or Four Corners Home for Children, like there's so many opportunities for individuals to be, to give a piece of themselves to make the community better.
So Mayor Duckett, how would you engage folks in the community? In other words, if someone was interested in serving, what would they do to find those places to serve?
No, I mean, that's a great question. I always reflect on my own kind of story and the fact that once I opened up my own business, I realized I had a little bit more time and I wanted to spend that time in service. So I found an organization, The Chamber of Commerce, that kind of spoke to me and I, you know, there was a network of people there who also had a heart to serve. And then the Farmington professionals were kind of a subsidiary of the chamber and got involved with those individuals and they had service projects. And so you find the thing that you care about the most and that you believe you can be a part of. And I think you go and you seek to understand what that organization's about. And do I see myself kind of fitting into that? Is there some way that I can support it, whether it's with my time, whether it's with my, you know, with money or, you know, or I want to be a part of the leadership group? I think all of us have been a part of different civic organizations. And you just got to, you got to find the one that you would really enjoy and kind of commit to it. You know, the first step in anything is the first, the hardest step is the first step. And that's the part. And I would just encourage people watching here, as we always do. I mean, there's, there it is. Just take the step. It's amazing how your life and your heart can open up to other people by taking that step and following it.
I assume that we have some boards and commissions that need people.
Well, we do have advisory boards for the city. And for people interested in those advisory boards, obviously, just like the city council meetings and the agendas, those things are all posted on the City of Farmington's website under Agendas and Boards. And if you're interested in serving in an advisory role, I always recommend folks attend meetings before applying. So you have some idea of, again, is this the right fit for me? Am I the right fit for them kind of thing?
So many people have talents and gifts that they could use for benefiting our community. So I think it's really important.
Absolutely. We have some big projects coming up this year. When folks asked me about why I wanted to run again for mayor, I felt like it was, a lot of that was because the door was still open on so many of the initiatives that we have kicked off. And I wonder out of the projects that are kind of sitting out there now, and we, we'll break ground on some this year, what are, you mentioned Gateway as being one you're very excited about, or are there others that are coming up that you really want to see in the next four years get completed? Councilor Jakino.
It's no secret that Gateway Park is very near and dear to my heart. I imagine that project becoming iconic and flagship for our community as people drive through on that very busy road. Boundless Journey, All Abilities Park is very special, so those cannot go without mention. However, our trail system is so beautiful, the connectivity that we can see in the future throughout Farmington and surrounding communities. We've talked about other things too with regard to the skate park, potentially updating our skate park. That was a blessing to hear from that community because so many young people showed up. And to the point we just all made, engaging community in the meetings and things that we have, I loved hearing from that group of constituents who made it very clear to us that that is something they wanted to see us pay attention to.
Councilor Rogers.
I'm really excited about the Pinion Hills expansion.
Oh, yes.
That is going to be a really needed corridor, important corridor, important artery.
And I think even on this episode, we can let folks know that we have received the construction bids back. And we're right, right where we need to be as far as funding goes. So we should see that project kick off this year, which is super exciting. I was worried about what those numbers are going to come in at based upon inflationary pressure that we've seen, but good news is we're right close where we need to be. We still need some state support, but.
And it's been many years.
We're going to get it done.
Many years in the making.
Decades even.
Well, Mayor Taylor said it best. Well, you know what, it would only cost me $2 million to have done it back in the 90s. Is it shocking when you hear things like that?
Yes, very.
Because we get bids back for things now and I'm just blown away by the costs. On the skate park, it looks like potential, we have some grant money coming in for almost a half million dollars for that. So that's a big chunk of change for another, you know, I think in many ways, we've inherited, just by nature of time passing, we've inherited this aging, you know, infrastructure in places like our, you know, our skate park or like Lions Pool.
Pinion Hills Golf Course.
Pinion Hills Golf Course, of course, the Brookside Pool that we've converted into Bisti Bay Water Park. So we've been, I think, fortunate to have the Community Transfer Nation Economic Diversification Fund. I know City Manager May says it all the time, I don't know what we could have done without this. And so we really owe our community a thanks that they've recognized the need. And it really was an urgent, what are we going to do in the midst of losing all these jobs? How can we make this community stronger and better? And I, we're sitting in downtown Farmington right now where one of the most important projects, I think, has been completed. And if you drove through during Christmas, which I hope the community took the time to do, the lights and everything are just, it's beautiful. It is really beautiful.
I see a lot of people too, Mayor, down here enjoying taking their families, taking pictures in front of the various elements that we have. And so that's really been fun to see.
Yeah. Councilor Kelly.
For me, it's North Trail Extension. I'd like to see that, see where we, how far we can get on that because that's what we've done in the past for the trail, get on the waters in that area is really nice. So I'm excited to see how far we can get on that part.
Yeah, we, we have eight and a half consecutive miles now of river trail. I believe we were looking at, you know, the next North Trail being the next part of that to get up to Aneese Park and those places closer to Pinion Hills Boulevard. And then we're also looking now to fund, I think we just did, fund the design to take Among the Waters over to Westland Park. So I, again, I picture individuals on, you know, coming off of North Foothills, being able to ride a bike down to the trail and ride that trail all the way to the hospital or anywhere else in town that, you know, again, it's just another means of getting from point A to point B, but such a beautiful, beautiful view. Among the Waters is one of the most beautiful parts of that trail also.
Definitely.
So kudos to you all for supporting that and funding that as well. One of the other projects I will say I'm excited about is the 18 megawatts of reciprocating engines that we're going to build for the electric utility because we need that replacement power in place, very much so. So again, thank you all for the support on that project as we continue to try and evolve our electric utility and make it as strong as we can and as low cost as we can. This 2023 was a very challenge when it came to the low cost, but reliability is still And we're very fortunate, I think, to have a utility that's as affordable as I believe it will be again this year and reliable as it is also. So lots of good stuff. And we have got the water treatment plant project that we're still trying to figure out, but very important to us. Moving on to kind of look at the state, you know, New Mexico as a whole has, has some amazing things that make it a great place to live, work, play and stay. And it has some challenging things that make those other issues come out. I mean, in your opinion, we, you know, I moved here from Colorado, but I've lived in Arizona, I've lived in Texas. I choose to live here because I love this community and what it stands for. But what, what do you see as the challenges or priorities for New Mexico this year? And I'll start with Councilor Bingham-Kelly.
I just, again, I think it's, it's so hard for businesses. I mean, we don't attract businesses like our neighboring states do. So I would hope that someday we'll be able to do that. And I just think with the surplus budget the state has had several years in a row, that infrastructure is a big component that they.
Oh, yeah.
I'd love to focus on our roads and throughout the state of New Mexico. So I think that would be, if they could focus on more infrastructure, I think it'd be a good start for New Mexico, so.
That's a great point. Councilor Rogers.
I think economic development is going to continue to be a challenge and that along the lines of what you were saying, possibly looking at our tax, tax laws and tax reform. But I think one important element is to provide for rural health care. I think, you know, we're having a difficult time, maybe challenging time, attracting physicians. And I think it's a continuing challenge. And I would like for us to focus as a state on attracting quality doctors. I think we've done a good job here in San Juan County, but I think more could be done. And just to, to continue looking at laws and policies that don't make sense in today's world so that businesses can thrive here.
Councilor Jakino.
The state as a whole has many gems in it. We have so much to celebrate here with beautiful landscapes and beautiful places to see and explore, natural landscapes. This year, having an unprecedented budget situation, I think, well, I hope, will allow an opportunity for us to expand on some things that are necessary. You named economic development and safe streets, education. What can we do to attract people to not just visit our state, but to stay in our state? And healthcare and education are a major component of that and public safety as well. So I'm really hoping that this year we can see that budget surplus be used responsibly to keep those things front and center.
It's just interesting. I think back to like 2014 and I believe the state budget was like $7 million.
Yes, I know.
You know, and now we're talking about 13 and a half million dollars, billion, sorry.
Billion.
I used the B word.
With the B.
The B word. And I think all of you just hit so much on the head. I mean, the roads. I was up in Monticello, Utah, at a little pizzeria there, and a lady came by and she's like, we're going from here, so where are you from? We're from Farmington, New Mexico. Oh, New Mexico. Yeah, I drove down there one time and I said, really? She's like, your roads. And that's what, that's what she took away from it was our roads. And I know she came down and took US 64 and went down through to Arizona where of course, if you're not careful, you may end up catching air and, yeah, roads, it's just interesting. And I, I don't know what it is and why it is. I've asked that question to understand exactly why our asphalt seems to be so different from everywhere else. It just disintegrates. Of course, we are in the high desert here where you've got the freezing nights and you've got, you know, warm days. And so those, you know, contracting and expanding components don't help. We did get Main Street done. Thank you, state, for getting the important parts of Main Street done. Be careful I say all on Main Street because I'm worried about those other sections, of course. But we know, you know, the debacle that was last winter and I'm glad that they showed up and got some of those parts done. And kudos to our Highway Commissioner, Tom Taylor, for his help in getting that done. Yes, and healthcare, that component to me, you know, we talk about, you know, tort laws and the things that have changed for, you know, malpractice insurance and the expense that's being put on our healthcare providers. It's pushed a lot of folks to want to leave the state because they're like, look, I'm in business and I'm going to take my talents and use them in a place where I can maximize, you know, my profits. And the state of New Mexico has taken too much. The insurance companies that I'm required to work with to cover these, these needs, it's just out of sight and it hurts us in so many ways. And I don't know, I don't know how that changes. I mean, we need a fundamental change in Santa Fe to really help some of these things move along. And, yeah, I have lots of, lots of concerns about that, but in a year of 13 and a half billion dollars, we hope some of these things could be addressed. Education to me starts in the home. I really would just encourage our community and parents of school-aged kids to really focus on, on your kids. I think, I think we've become very distracted as a society and it's easy to get distracted and take away from moments and opportunities to spend time with our children and teach them some of the fundamental components that we need them to have so that they can continue to make this a, you know, I would say, use the term a profitable life, but a productive life, a life with purpose. And a life with purpose starts in the home and ensuring that that, that young person understands what purpose means and how do you go and get it? That all starts in the house. And I know that's a struggle for some folks, but there's a lot of programs that have been put together that are funded by the state, that are funded by the federal government, that we contribute to, to help families who are in need. And certainly, we did a whole, we've done a whole episode here recently just with the San Juan United Way and the different programs that are available for individuals who are seeking help. But good stuff. All right. As city councilors, has your expectations changed regarding what you thought the council position would be or isn't be now that you've been through this role? I mean, you're tenured individuals, two-time electeds. Has it changed at all?
I think we kind of covered this already when we were talking about the challenges of being a city councilor with the magnitude of the decisions that we have to make.
Sure.
And to expand on that, we have, I think, 13 departments within the city. And so one challenge I would identify is having to know a little bit about a lot. One day you have to be an expert in wastewater, the next day you have to be an expert in budgeting. And then the next day, we're talking about artwork or decorations or community events. And so there's a lot that goes into it. And I don't know that I realized just how much really goes into what we do as councilors. And I love it. I love that it's challenging and intriguing and is different every single day.
It's a very interesting position to be in. It, it did exceed my expectations, honestly, the size of the budget, the size of the electric utility, how many employees, how many miles of lines that we service. It's just, it's a, it's a small city in population, but we have so many things going on and it's, it just evolves and changes all the time.
Yeah.
I really honestly love Farmington. I think we've, we've just got a lot of good things going for us and I am proud and honored to serve in this position. It's, it's been really, truly humbling.
I would agree. I think everything that Counselor Rogers and Jakino said. And the biggest thing though is, is obviously, we can't make everybody happy. And that's, that's always a struggle.
Sure.
And so that's been the hardest part, but luckily people do compromise and come together and, and, you know, are able to get things done, so.
And I'll go back to something I said earlier, and that is, we are very thoughtful people about our decisions. And I think that people may not like. people about our decisions. And I think that people may not like what eventually comes out of the council as far as a decision, but I feel like they trust us and believe that we've done our homework and that we really, truly understand what the impacts are and what we're doing in the end. I really think that they trust us to make the right call.
It's been interesting, just even my own progression. And I like that statement of I got to know a lot or a little about a lot and many things. And, you know, community members, of course, part of the main component of government that I believe is critical is transparency. And I think it's important for our community to know, these city council meetings are public for a reason. We encourage people to come and engage and learn what's happening in their community. And when there's an item on the agenda that you have interest in, you know, make your voice heard. Come and talk to us. Tell us what your thoughts are on it. That's what we have public comment for. But if you can't make a meeting, there's a lot of other ways to know what's going on. And certainly, the meetings are streamed. So if you're able to watch it live, you can watch it live. They're recorded. I was reminded today that if on the agenda that goes along with the recording of it, you can click on, you know, the different parts, and it takes you right to the part of the recording where that conversation was being had. The minutes are posted online, so folks can see what was said and done. So you can, you know, it's just a choice people have to make to want to be informed. And of course, on Facebook, you'll get kind of the things, the government component, the organization is doing, whether it's parks and rec, water, utility, electric, those kind of things. So there's a lot of places to be engaged, but you can email any of us. You can call any of us. There's a number of ways to get ahold of their elected officials. So that part, to me, is maybe still one of the most surprising things is how few people come to the meetings. And, but you know what? I've heard somebody say, I think we were talking yesterday, that people, well, I've elected you in that position to be my voice. Well, sometimes my voice may be different than your voice. And so hearing your thoughts is really important to me on these issues. And that's why we're in this position, is to be the voice of our constituents. And so I encourage, you know, people who are watching here, again, come to the meetings, tune into the meetings, whatever you feel comfortable with doing. But what we're dealing, what we're working on is very difficult at times. I think the most difficult times, we talk about the most challenging things we deal with, of course, are, you know, special use permits and those things that kind of put, you know, property owners versus other property owners. Those are not easy situations, as you would all, I would think, would agree. And anytime you have people come out to those meetings where they're defending their property and their point of view for or against somebody else who wants to develop, it makes it very hard for somebody who wants to have a horse on their property or, you know, the chicken SUP from many years ago. And those things are just, it makes, and honestly, it's probably some of the best council meetings because of just how robust they become in many different ways. But yeah, those have been interesting.
I really try to approach those situations, and I think we all do, very open, with an open mind, not going in with a decision right away. Because there are times when I go to a meeting, I'll listen to both sides and think differently than I perhaps did before. So being an open-minded person, I think, is really a critical element.
Yeah, I had somebody approach me about one of the decisions that was made recently. And they were like, I just don't understand why you guys would do that. And I said, well, why didn't you come to the meeting and tell us? You know, I mean, if there's going to be one group of people that are there to support or be against it, really need to have somebody from the other side come as well so that there's more of a balanced voice, you know, for the community out there. Very interesting. Challenging things, I think, are kind of coming up when we kind of look at where we are as, you know, not just a community, as a state, as a society, is going to be continually finding people who want to serve in these roles in our cities. And we've had, we've gone through the challenge, of course, with police. Over the last few years, you know, the national narrative was very anti-police, and it became very hard for us to attract people into that role. I think we've kind of come out of that a little bit, and we're seeing better numbers of folks who are interested in being in those positions. Our academies have quite a few people. But I mean, how do you see the future for local governments and even people who want to run for elected offices? We're faced with, well, social media is a big part of it, but a lot of, what the word is really? It's just individuals who are
Negative.
Negative.
Divisiveness and polarization.
Yeah, divisiveness and polarized. And because we have social media that plays such a big role now in everybody's life to some degree, although I've pulled back quite a bit, people who don't have to have a face to it, you know, they're, but the reason I bring that up is simply for the fact that we need good people to keep running for office. I think you're all good people.
Likewise.
And I want to see good people continue to be interested in this. There's challenging parts when you get emails every day or you get things from people that are just not happy with things, but they don't come to you in a way that's really respectful. How do you think that looks for us going forward?
Well, it is certainly a challenge. I really believe most people have talents and gifts that they can give to the community. And we need those voices. We need that diversity in our thinking. It's how we evolve as a society and as a city.
Right.
And I have never regretted being a councillor, not one minute. I've enjoyed every minute of it. Have there been challenges? Yes. Have we had some exciting moments? Yes. But it's very rewarding. And what I've gained personally has far exceeded what I've given. And I just think it's helped me to grow as a person, honestly.
Yeah. So we need more people who kind of recognize that.
The value of that.
The value of that service, of that role. And that's really on us in this position to share that, by the way.
It is.
You know, so that we continue to find those folks out there with that genuine service heart and encourage them. And because it's your school boards, it's your city councils, it's your college board, it's, you know, it's the Boys and Girls Club Board. I mean, it's all of those.
Together, specifically, we've been through some major challenges over the last five and a half years. COVID, the generating station, community tragedy, budget shortfalls. We've been through a lot. And the fact that all of us have still chosen to run for a second term, I hope proved that even those challenges did not dissuade us from wanting to serve and step up and continue what could be a very hard fight, because we don't know what's going to happen in the next four years. We know what we want to look forward to in the next four years. However, even with regard to all of the things that we've been through together, the tears, the laughter, the joy, the sadness, sometimes disappointments, I still did not have a doubt in my mind of whether or not I wanted to serve this community and make sure that my new knowledge that I have gained about how city government works, that I could put that to use and continue what we've started together. And
That's well said.
I think we all want the place we live in to be better. And I think the only way to do that is to get involved locally. And honestly, I believe in a definite term limit. I mean, I don't think we should serve forever. And so obviously, we've got to have that next group of people coming up that are willing to serve and want to run for office. So I think that's pretty important.
This speaks a lot to me about the Civility First campaign and really just recognizing the need for people to be respectful. Regardless of what you're, you and I may have different opinions about things, I'm going to listen a whole lot better if we're respectful to one another in those conversations. And it's vice versa in that same way. And so I appreciate, I don't know if you've seen, the Red Apple Transit buses now have the Civility First component to it. And, you know, we've just, we got to keep talking about it. That is one of the things that, you know, when we look at the challenges facing society and, you know, workforce, I use this example, I was at a Department of Workforce Solutions meeting, and they're talking about just the labor force that has shrunk. And this was two years ago. All these workers are no longer in the workforce. You know, what are we doing? And I asked them, I said, who in the leadership roles, like governor or president, who, are we hearing the voices of these folks say, Americans, we've got to get back to our jobs, and we've got to get back to being productive, and this is the American way, and without your work, you know, we can't be the great country that we should be? I don't hear any of that. And I think it's really important that elected officials take those moments and speak those words, because those words impact young people. They impact teenagers. They impact people in their homes. And you've been elected to a position because people believe in your message, they believe in your values, they believe that you're going to lead us in the right direction. We need to be espousing that everywhere we go. And at schools, at public meetings, at, you know, just even talking opportunities, I think it's important for us to be that voice, for those very basic foundational components to make living in America the great thing that it is.
I agree.
Yeah. There's a lot we could talk about. Is there anything on your all's mind? I don't know how long we've been going here, but
I just, I love Farmington. I love serving Farmington. I love serving with this group of people and the amazing people that we have in our department heads, in our leadership positions at the city. And I think Farmington's very best days are ahead, partially because what other councils have done ahead of us.
Yeah.
And what this council is doing. Hopefully, 10 years from now, someone will look back and say, that was a really great time. I look forward to the next couple of years to see what we can do as a group.
Sure.
It's powerful, what we've done so far. And I think that will continue.
I agree. And I would say this, you know, it doesn't just start and end here in the city. We need folks to run for office at the state levels also. One of the major hurdles that I see confront us on a regular basis is the ideology of, that is killing power plants, it's killing jobs. We got a 13 and a half million dollar budget, billion dollar budget because oil and gas has done so well in our state. And we're doing all we can in Santa Fe to slow that down. And I say I don't understand, but I believe that I do understand. And for many folks, it may be a conspiracy theory. But it's vital to our way of life that we support those industries that support life. And life worth living is a life of purpose. And the ability to go to a job and make a career that pays you well so you can grow a family and have the things that you want to live this life the way that you want to live it. And we're really, at times, I think, at odds in Santa Fe. And I think it's unfortunate. And I would just encourage people here to be engaged at that level also.
Good point.
And when you, you know, this most recent electric vehicle rule that's been passed, your voices are really important. I know you don't think they matter. They matter. You need to send in your public comments. You need to show up to these meetings. You need to go to the roundhouse during the session. And when there's an issue that's really important to you, you need to make your voice heard and bring it, of course, from a place of respect and bring it with data and information that will help these elected leaders at that level understand your story and how their decisions are impacting your life. So this is, this is a people's government, but it's not a people's government if the people aren't engaged in it.
I agree.
I would leave it, I would say that. Yeah. Any final thoughts? No?
Do you have any final thoughts, Mayor?
I always have final thoughts. Yeah, of course.
I will say that I have enjoyed this opportunity to have more of an informal conversation with you all. Thank you very much. And maybe we can do it again sometime or on a more often basis so that we can kind of share what's on our mind and not necessarily only be able to talk about what's on an agenda, because there's so much we could talk about, as you pointed out. We could further the education conversation. We could continue to talk about state government or maybe even zero in specifically on certain projects. But I have enjoyed this opportunity.
I have too.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Glad you all have, glad you all accepted the invitation.
Yes.
And I think it's important for the public to know there was no, there was no public business being done here today. We were all here and just having conversations about
No votes happening today.
No. There's none of that going on in this. Well, listen, I appreciate you all, and I've enjoyed serving also. And I know we all, we don't always agree. That's a part of this, that's part of having a diverse elected body. But I do believe that we're all trying to do our best for the right reasons. And I just appreciate, you know, that that's, I believe that's where your centers as well and where you come from, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy Year.
Happy New Year to you out there in the city of Farmington. Lots happening here in your city. Make sure you're engaged and being a part of that conversation and utilizing your elected representatives when you see an issue that concerns you, you know, and come with some education and come with respect. I mean, that's how I want to treat all of you. That's how I want to treat everybody who's out there. So happy new year to you. Best wishes to you and your family, your businesses, your education, anything with your retirement, if you're here for retirement, to your outdoor journeys.
I like that.
We hope 2024 is the best that it can be. And God bless you, and we'll see you here next time on the Mayor's Panel.